To start with announcements, and we'll start with Dr. Brandon. No announcements? Ms. Spearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to talk tonight about Maplewood High School. They have, under the new academic performance framework, they are making some outstanding progress. The student attendance has increased by more than 3% over the last two years. The graduation rate has increased by 6%, and it's one of the top six in terms of the zoned high schools in terms of the amount of increase it has made in the graduation rate. The ACT scores have improved by almost a half of a point. The TEL Tennessee and the Tripod Survey has demonstrated a strong culture and climate that is conducive to learning and also conducive to high achievement. The biology scores improved by 14%, and Maplewood has had positive T-VAS growth in Algebra I and a 6% increase in Algebra II scores. The scholarships awarded this past year was, actually over the last two years, has increased by 230%. And the senior class received earned and accepted 2.2 million this year in scholarship offerings. They have areas for improvement, which include English I, II, and III, and they're working to improve that. So I'm going to be presenting some information to the student body tomorrow at Maplewood, and I'm very pleased with their results. Secondly, on October 24th this week, Dan Mills is having the Dragon Jubilee and Carnival from 5:00 to 7:30. There'll be games, food, prizes, a bake sale, and horseback rides. It's $10 for admission for kids and $5 for dinner. And the benefits, this will benefit the Dan Mills PTO. Dr. Brandon and I will be attending the annual conference for the Council for Great City Schools, which begins next week in Albuquerque. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Kim? Ms. Shepherd?
I do have a couple. I wanted to announce that the McGavick High School Capitol Show choir will be the entertainment at the Tennessee School Board Association Convention on Sunday, November 10th. This choral group is an award-winning group, and we're all, and for real treat, and it's an honor to be selected to perform at that convention. And also, you'll hear more of this at future times, but please mark your calendars for Saturday, January 4th, for the second annual Fans Retro Classic Basketball Game. Fans is the foundation for athletics in Nashville schools. My former colleague, Mark North, is the foundation founder, and this is a really fun event to go watch these basketball games, and so please come out and join me in this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Banks then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to my friend, Councilman Lonell Matthews, for the invitation to join him and others in the community earlier today at the YMCA luncheon honoring Vanderbilt football players who volunteer with the YCAP program, and also our friend who administered some of our oaths of office last year, former juvenile court judge Betty Adams Green, who was honored for her legacy support of YCAP. It was a pleasure joining the event and also visiting with Journey Johnson, CEO of the Y of Middle Tennessee. Journey's going to be leaving us at the end of the year to join his family in Virginia. He and his team have been a great friend to MNPS and all of us individually. Journey said, rest assured, our partnerships with the Y will remain strong in the future. I want to say also, congratulations to my friend Stephen Fotopoulos and his team at the Tennessee Immigrant and Refugee Rights Coalition on 10 years of exceptional service creating a statewide voice for immigrants and refugees. Turk, as they're called, does a great work promoting and ensuring the American dream for all of our new Americans and their families. All of Turk's friends and extended family will be participating in a festival this Saturday, October 26th, between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. at Casa Atsafran, 2195 Nowansville Road in the heart of District 7. Look forward to seeing you there. Please join us to congratulate Turk and to celebrate a decade of building a diverse and welcoming Tennessee and America. Finally, just a reminder to my board colleagues, as the board's delegate to the charter review process, I'll be bringing a resolution at our November board meeting proposing some conditions and priorities upon which we might solicit charter applications during the 2014 cycle, which begins in the spring. I brought notice on this originally at last month's work session. Since then, I've been working with Dr. Register and management to formulate ideas, and we'll bring a more fully formed set of ideas for your consideration next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes? Ms. Brog?
I have a topic that I would like to raise for future discussion, and this is appropriate time to do it.
Knock yourselves out.
All right. I thought that's what I was supposed to talk about. I want to talk about recess. And there, last year, last December, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a statement urging schools not to cut recess, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued a report in August that stated that 14.2% of children ages 2 to 4 in Tennessee are considered obese, more than 29% of low-income children ages 2 to 5 are overweight or obese, and more than 36% of children ages 10 to 17 are also considered overweight or obese, according to the task force. And I know that we're sort of letting our schools decide, you know, how much time they are allowing children for recess, but I think it's super important, not just for health reasons, which we're all concerned about, but because it also helps learning. There was a recent study in the Journal of Pediatrics, which said that physically fit children absorb and retain new information more effectively than children who are out of shape, and better fitness has actually been linked to higher achievement score. So I would love to see us talk about recess and how much time is appropriate for children for play and physical activity, and maybe come up with some policies district-wide.
Thank you. And I just have a few announcements. First and foremost, you noticed that your mics have been moved to your left side. Please make sure that you are, you know, very mindful of where, you're okay. Please make sure you're mindful of your mics, because if you don't, if the mics don't pick you up, they can't hear you on the feedback. So I remember today. Also, Parent Engagement Summit. The MNPS Department of Family and Community Partnerships invites you to register for Family Matters, Engaging All Parents for Student Success, and Second Annual Parent Engagement Summit. The full-day conference will be held on Friday, November 8th, at the Martin Center from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The keynote speaker is acclaimed author Eileen Kugler, who is a national leader in engaging diverse parents in education. Additionally, we will have over 20 professional development workshops. Also, try to get this on your calendars, Principal for a Day. Annual Principal for a Day will be Friday, November 22nd, concluding with a buffet lunch at 11:30 at the Martin Center and a short program at 12:00 noon. If you have not already been contacted, I'm sure you have your schools that you'd love to reach out to to shadow and be principal of a day. Mock School Board Meeting. And this is my personal favorite. On Tuesday, November 26th, at 4:00 p.m., we will have a mock school board meeting with some of our students to allow them a bird's-eye view into governing through policies that directly affect their academic lives. We will have this meeting immediately before our 5:00 p.m. work session. If you have not already submitted your student's name, please do so by Friday, November 2nd, to Ms. Hawkins. Also, as a reminder, TSBA conference dates are November 8th through 10th. If you have not registered, please let Ms. Hawkins know so you can get registered. I would love to see full board participation, especially on Sunday, when the McGavick Choir is going to be performing. Finally, my personal point of privilege here, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk is going to be on November 2nd, Saturday, November 2nd. I, again, for the 11th year, will be, will have a team. This year, I'm partnering with one of the Business Energy Teams at Nissan to, and I love that, I love saying the name of my team, because everybody just gets tickled. It's called the Rack Rescuers. So if you are dying to get out there and participate, come join our team. You can go to the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer website and join the team or make a donation, and we would love to have you. So that is, again, on November 2nd. Registration starts at 8:30, so it's a 5K walk around downtown Nashville. It's lots of fun. And having completed all of our announcements, Dr. Register, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll introduce this very quickly, because this is a continuation of a conversation that we've had before about the student selection and pathway process for students attending Martin Luther King Junior Academic Magnet School. And we have, we have been looking at this, this school year because of the impending overcrowding of the school and not being able to continue to serve the pathway students as we have in the past. Our goal would be to not have to be having this conversation. You know, we would like to, wish we had the capacity to continue the process as it exists now. Martin Luther King's a great school, and we'd like to see that continue, but we know that if we, unless we take preventative measures in the next few years, we're going to be forced to make changes in that pathway process, and now is the appropriate time to deal with that. Over the last few weeks, we've had a number of meetings with parents. Mr. Weber and Mr. Carr and staff have met with parents at Head Middle School, at Martin Luther King, and then we had a parent meeting at the Martin Center a few weeks ago, in which I presided and presented and responded to questions. And then, as recently as yesterday afternoon, I met with parent leadership at Martin Luther King, representing, parents there representing Head Middle School and Martin Luther King Academic Magnet, and with the two principals from those two schools. And so our goal is to, and as I've said earlier, we, and at Martin and from those other meetings, we've listened to parent concerns that have been raised and have considered additional options coming out of those meetings and have developed a proposal that I will propose tonight. And in fact, we have five scenarios that we could consider, but the last three of those are recommendations that I would not consider, and we can, we can approach those in depth or as briefly as you like. We had some other, heard some other suggestions yesterday from parents, and I think board members have received a copy of communication from parents that we can discuss if you choose to do so. Let me say that the, that the goal, our approach now is to have the least, least negative impact, the least amount of change to serving the students who are presently in the pipeline and the pathway process that we currently have. In other words, dealing with, dealing effectively with overcrowding without making significant changes in our diversity plan or certainly in eliminating options for parents, not keeping our promises to parents as it presently exists. So the recommendation we're going to make is one that we think causes the least disruption. It does, it does require additional capacity at Martin Luther King, and we're prepared to talk about that a little bit tonight. Before I, before we go any further, I want to ask Chris Weber to introduce members of his staff who are here and who work on this, people assignment staff, and I will introduce Ken Murdock, who is in charge of facilities for the district also.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I can, I don't think it's on.
Green light.
It's green.
The light is green.
Oh, you know. There you go. Just hold it close.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Register. So I'd like to introduce my staff, Ms. Janaye Hayes, who's the coordinator of our School Options Department. She oversees all of the magnet and lottery processes and all the special transfer cases that we hear. Mr. Wade Jones has worked in our department for many years, and he's now on a part-time basis dealing with the same school option information. And Ryan Latimer is the coordinator of enrollment forecasting and boundary planning, and so Ryan does many of our demographic studies and enrollment projections, as well as zoning and boundary planning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And all of you know Ken, and we have Ken here, who's been doing preliminary conceptual work on the facility at Martin Luther King, and we'll ask him to join you at the appropriate time. The original recommendation to you that I put out was to eliminate 7th and 8th grade at Martin Luther King and to grow the capacity at the high school level to fill out the 1,200 seats that are available there with a 9th through 12th academic magnet. And that would allow Head Middle School students and Rose Park Middle School students who qualify a seat and also have seats available in an expanded 9 through 12 on a county-wide lottery basis. As you all know, there was a great deal of support for continuing the 7 through 12 model that we have at Martin Luther King, and we heard that from a lot of, lot of parents in the district. And so we developed another, another option scenario too, and I'm going to ask Chris and Ken to deal with that in more detail, but that scenario two keeps grades 7 through 12 at Martin Luther King and allows us to continue to feed a pipeline of students who are presently being served with some modifications to improve the enrollment process at Head Middle School, which is somewhat in disrepair at this point in time. We can talk about that a little bit. But to honor the, honor the pathway, to honor the grade structure, and to continue to serve students at that level, and that's by increasing the capacity at Martin Luther King from 1,200 to 1,500 students. Chris will deal to some extent with, with that recommendation. There were some other, some other options that we ran numbers on, and we have data on if you, if you'd like to get into it, that, that we don't think are acceptable for different reasons. The scenario three is to actually conduct a lottery for pathway seats. If we continue with the present process without, without increasing capacity, then we will have more students who qualify through Head and Rose Park with a, with a present process than we have seats available. And so simply, the third option is to lottery off those seats at, at the 9th grade level and restrict the number, and therefore eliminate some of those students who are in the pathway who qualify at those two middle schools. And of course, that would mean also no additional countywide seats available at the high school level. Another option that we, we heard put forth from some parents was to make Head an academic magnet, like Meggs is an academic magnet, and we, we have run data on that, and that has a negative impact on diversity at the school, changes pretty significantly the diversity at the school, and it would not support our diversity plan. And we changed significantly the makeup at Head Middle School also, so we don't support that recommendation. And then finally, is to, the one is to change academic entrance requirements, to raise the standard, if you will. If you raise the standard at Martin Luther King, you have to raise the standard at Hume Fog also. You can't have two academic sets of standards for academic magnets in the district. Very much a negative impact on diversity at the two schools and much more limiting factors. So we come back around to alternative two, which is to try to keep intact as much as possible and improve, in some respects, the pathway that we presently have by expanding the capacity at Martin Luther King. And data shows that we, with expanding the capacity to 1,500 students, we'll be able to serve the students who qualify in the pathway well into the future, and we have that data available. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris now to present specifics of the proposals for you, and then when we get to scenario two, I want to ask Ken to look at the preliminary feasibility study for adding capacity at Martin Luther King.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Register. Mr. Jones is going to hand out some handouts for you on the two recommendations, the two proposals that you have. To give you a brief introduction, as Dr. Register already mentioned, when we met with you last time, the, due to the increased achievement levels at Head and Rose Park, there's more students following the pathway into Martin Luther King. And so if we look historically, about five, six years ago, we averaged about 170 students following this pathway into Martin Luther King. Over the last three years, that average is now 220, and last year, there were 244 students that actually followed that pathway. Once we had academic achievement data available for this year's pathway students, that increased the number of pathways we expect for next year to rise to 285 students, which would cause Martin Luther King to be roughly over capacity by 50 students. And so that's when we brought forward the change to you, because next year, we would, it appears as if Martin Luther King would be over capacity by 50 students. Then in year two, that 50 would go up to about 120, and then in year three, it'd increase to about 180, and then eventually, it caps out about 200 students or so over capacity. Now, that outlines the problem, and that's what you see on the first page that you see. Now, when we consider, if you flip to page two, when we considered the proposals or the different options for addressing the Martin Luther King overcrowding, we considered four different criteria. We looked at honoring pathway commitments to families, because that's very important. We looked at countywide seat availability into Martin Luther King, which this year has restricted down to fewer than 10 students. In fact, three students that are non-pathway are actually enrolled in Martin Luther King this year, and they're at capacity at 1,200. The four, the third criteria is just simply preventing Martin Luther King from becoming overcrowded, and the fourth is a factor of diversity. When we evaluated the factor of diversity, we used the district's diversity management plan, and we can address that. You'll see these discussed in the different scenarios. Within the district's diversity management plan, it looks at four different components. The first component is a racial/ethnic component, and so you'll see here whether the schools currently meet it under the racial/ethnic component or not. And then the, and then the other three factors are income, language, and disability. And so those other four factors, or the other three factors, income, language, and disability are also listed here. Now, in these proposals, we were not able to truly project the implications of income, language, and disability, and these schools currently do not meet those criteria. So for the most part, for these recommendations, we're focusing in on the racial and ethnic impact. So to move on to scenario one. Scenario one is the proposal that we came to you when we first came to the board meeting, and we shared it in the director's report last time we just talked. This essentially is the recommendation to remove the 7th and 8th grade from Martin Luther King. By removing those two grade levels, that would in turn add about 300 student capacity to the Martin Luther King if it only served grades 9 through 12. That in turn would mean that the pathway from Head would feed into Martin Luther King in the 8th grade moving into the 9th grade. And so by doing so, this recommendation would address the overcrowding. It would, it would also benefit diversity at Head, and it would have a neutral diversity impact at Martin Luther King. However, there are problems with that scenario, and when we started to speak to the parents in the community about that recommendation, there, as Dr. Register mentioned, there were specific concerns about, not only about the commitments for 5th graders and 6th graders that thought they were going to start the 7th grade, and we discussed some of those concerns about those commitments, because we would eventually be able to make that guarantee, but there were some short-term commitment problems that parents had. And there was also specific concerns that parents channeled back to us about removing the 7th and 8th grade out of Martin Luther King, and what that would do to the program there and the history there. So that's when we moved to scenario two, which is a scenario that Dr. Register, I believe, is going to recommend. In this scenario, it requires a capital expense to add on to Martin Luther King about 300 student capacity. This would address the overcrowding from the pathway. It would be the, it would be the most minimum impact to the existing structure, because this grade 7th and 8th would stay at Martin Luther King. The pathways at Head would stay in effect. The 6th graders can go ahead and pathway on. This year, the families that are already in the process of pathways can continue forward for next year. There's only one small change that we would recommend making at Head, and that would be to remove the pathway from 7th into the 8th grade at Martin Luther King. And so by remove, right now, there's three transition years. You can either go from the 6th grade at Head into the 7th. You can also go from Head's 6th grade, or Head's 7th grade into 8th grade at Martin Luther King. And the third would be if you're in Head's 8th grade, you could pathway into 9th grade at Martin Luther King. So we would recommend eliminating the one pathway, which is the 7th into the 8th grade. What that would allow us to do is only backfill one time at Head. So that would eliminate some of the churn that's taken place at Head from all the pathway seats moving forward, and it would provide a little more stability to the academic program ahead. And so in this scenario, with the additional capacity of 300 students, it would address the overcrowding concerns that we have at Head, and it would also allow countywide students, about 100 students per year, to be admitted through the lottery into Martin Luther King. The diversity implications of this scenario are neutral. It does not impact the Martin Luther, the diversity of Martin Luther King. It remains essentially just like it is, and the same is true at Head, because essentially the same pathways and the same existence is, for the most part, already established at Head.
Okay, great. We planned to do this, to talk with this scenario about facility changes. We have those other scenario that we've developed, but if it's okay with members of the board, I'd like to show you what we're looking at in terms of building and building capacity first, and then we can come back and talk about those other recommendations. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, good. Ken? Is the mic on?
Yes.
I think it is now.
Okay, go ahead. Okay.
We wanted to look at possible addition of classroom space at, at Martin Luther King. We're really very limited in where we can look. East and south, of course, are right on the street, and the north side of the school is at the railroad, and I've included just an aerial here for you to look at. So it really boiled down to us looking at the west or back of the building, which is the current soccer field. And so we took a look at the possibility of adding classroom there, and we wanted to consider criteria of keeping it as close to other classroom space and other parts of the building as possible. So when we looked at that, it really brought it, just a drawing that shows the surrounding criteria, or some of the surrounding components. There's a NES substation farther to the west, and of course, Watkins Park is on the east with various playgrounds and ball fields and tennis courts. And what we looked at, as shown here, was a solution that put a new classroom wing kind of in the corner at the back of the building, which keeps it as close to the existing classroom spaces as possible. The other thing we wanted to do is reroute the drive. There's currently a service drive that goes right down that back wall to the kitchen area, and so we needed to reroute that service drive so that access from classroom to classroom, students are not crossing traffic or not dealing with service vehicles. This sketch shows a 12-classroom addition immediately at the back of the building, and it also shows, shaded in blue as new, an addition to the dining cafeteria and the kitchen. Now, these are kind of separate projects, but we looked at them together because of the added capacity makes the existing situation with the cafeteria, which is already too small, even worse. And so we've shown adding those 12 classrooms and having connectors into two parks of the building, perhaps also connecting into the new cafeteria space, and those connectors might be covered walkways at least, or perhaps enclosed corridors that connect the buildings. When we rerouted the service drive along to the other part, we relocated the kitchen, and we brought the service drive around and added additional parking. Parking is the other big need that we have at this school. So by... So by rerouting that drive, it opened us up to do parking, and this sketch shows, it adds the, it doubles the size of the kitchen, it triples the size of the cafeteria, it adds an entirely new service area and, and dock, and then also adds the additional parking. So without a pointer, I'm not sure if you followed all that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but it involved adding those classrooms, 118 additional parking spaces. Now, doing that, we lost the soccer field, and we looked at where we might place that. We looked at other surrounding properties that might be available. They're very limited. And so we looked at the park next door and the possibility of relocating our soccer field to the park. And this sketch shows that it's relocated there in the southeast corner. We'd relocate it there and add bleachers and lighting, so it could be used more frequently by different parts of the community. In doing so, we have to relocate the tennis courts, a picnic shelter, and one of the playgrounds. So with, with moving that into the park area, we're able to correct our classroom expansion or, and our parking situation. Also eliminate that service drive and create a nice interior courtyard for students that can be accessed during parts of the day. We have discussed this design and showed this design, parks, they are considering it. They are going to talk to the various groups that use this park and get back to us this week, they said. Can I answer any questions, or can I point at anything that might be helpful?
Just a quick question. Along Joe Johnson, the two buildings, we've got a, maybe an eighth lot, eight space parking lot that you show now is green. Is that additional green or courtyard space?
It is. We'd, we'd lose that space and, and not have the parking there. One other aspect that we would incorporate into this is a car drop-off lane going through the current parking lot at the corner of Joe Johnston and DB Todd. And that will just allow, now they're dropping off in the street or in the metro park lot across the street, and students are crossing traffic. So we want to get all drop-off on our site so that students are not in the street.
So would this, would this expansion also include a renovation of the existing buildings?
It doesn't, in, in what we've shown here. This is just the addition of the classroom and the possible addition of the cafeteria.
Are we expecting to request that funding as well?
I would, I would recommend that we do it in phases. Martin Luther King's one of four high schools that really need renovation, and there's further work to do here. What it does, what it does do with the addition of the building, though, is to do a partial renovation with a, with a, with a big concern about the present building, and that's kitchen and dining room. The dining room's not big enough now, and so, so that would, that would allow us to enhance that space now. It, it, when you think about renovating a school while you're having school, having that classroom addition would help us with flexibility in the building as we go forward, and it would also give us an opportunity to do other renovations. As, as all of you know, the place where I think we're the furthest behind is in major high school renovations, and so the cost would, would go up much faster. And I think the, the other pressures that we have on our capital budget will be those other high priority needs that we have in the district. And we, we feel like this is a feasible start with an appropriate capital budget to, to get us started here to really relieve the overcrowding situation, and then come back into phase two to do the complete renovation of the building.
And I have a question, too, and it's based on capital, the capital needs budget. Because right now, we've got basically around $9.5 million slated for MLK renovation in 2015, 16. So how is this, okay, first of all, what is the estimated cost on this renovation?
On the addition of the classroom and the parking that goes with it, it's approximately 3.5 million. If we chose to do the cafeteria expansion, that's approximately 2.2 million.
Okay.
Relocation of the soccer field into the park with the things that we would need to do there would be about $900,000.
Okay.
Seven million, roughly.
6.6, yeah.
Okay. And so the plan here is to go to Metro Council and ask for the additional six, six and a half million dollars to do this renovation. My question is, how does that affect our capital needs down the road?
Well, it would, it would change the priorities there, but the, of course, the, the big question is, how much capital are we going to have available this year? As you know, we've been stopped, we were stalled several years ago for a couple of years on capital budget. Preliminary conversation with County Finance Director is that there will be a capital budget available this year. So it would be up to the board to work this into the priorities and also consider the other high priority needs that we have in the district. I think that we have, that we can constructively address the other high priority needs that we have. We know some of the real pressures that we have, and also work this in if we get sufficient capital budget.
Do you anticipate that this would decrease the capital need for the renovation of the school down the, when we have the $25 million?
Yes.
Down the road?
Okay. By, probably not by the?
By at least the cost of the renovation of the kitchen and dining room.
Ms. Berry?
What's the timeframe that we're thinking that this will take to approve this? And, and at the same time with Metro Council? And how will we proceed? Will we put portables in there and Martin Luther King until that has been approved? Until, yeah, that'd be great.
This particular project would follow the capital improvement budget process that the board typically follows, where we have a board capital needs committee that Mr. Hayes chairs. And so through the board's capital needs committee, we would be looking at all potential renovation, addition, new schools type projects, and bring forth a prioritized recommendation to the full board for consideration. And there is a timeline that's set whereby all departments of metro government are required to submit their capital improvement budget request to the metro planning department by the end of January. And so we've internally begun that process and would be asking Mr. Hayes to schedule a capital needs committee sometime in the, in the near future. And once that capital improvement budget is submitted to the metro planning department, it basically just creates a placeholder until we know what the mayor's going to propose as far as a metro government-wide capital improvement budget, and then ultimately what the metro council approves. As far as timeline goes, if we, if last year and the year before are any indication, they, both the years, the metro council approved the metro capital improvement budget in June. And so once it's approved by the council, then we can, we can actually begin to utilize the funds.
Want to talk to Dr. Register about updating our capital needs priority list? When we went through the capital budget process a year ago, and we were, I guess, fortunately awarded dollars from Metro Council and the mayor's office, when we actually toured facilities, we saw some scores hadn't been updated. You know, what'll be an interesting discussion for us to have is, will the score elevate it to the highest priority list based on the metrics that we use? And I don't know the answer to that question, but capacity, deferred maintenance, there are lots of, as you may recall, things that go into that, that rubric, and we use it to prioritize the, the spending. So it'll be interesting to see where it fits into the picture. Does it come up as an immediate priority as year one based on capacity and condition? Or is it further down the line? And do we want to move it up for some reason?
So, so I think an important point to make is this, because, because I've been asked before, why don't we just, why don't, other schools are overcrowded. Other schools are over 100 percent, and, and I think it's important to clarify where we are, the difference between magnet schools and, and other schools or open enrollment schools. We don't overpopulate magnet schools, particularly the, the academic magnet schools are not overpopulated, or, or the ones that aren't academic magnets that are, that don't have attendance zones. And, and the reason is, we, we limit enrollment. We cap enrollment at the capacity of the school. If you start going over that, then where do you draw the line? Do you draw the line when the chairman's child's in? Or do you draw the line, you know, do you set it at 25 over, or 50 over, or 75 over? And you can't, you can't manage a magnet school or open enrollment population without respecting the maximum capacity in those schools. So it's, it's, you know, so there is a, 1,200 is a capacity. So we've got, you know, we stop at 1,200 students. We have to do that.
Just for the record, my baby graduated two years ago. So there is no issue. I do have a follow-up question, too, because it wasn't, the general public is not seeing this document. Can you just clarify where we are in Rose Park? Because I don't believe we're moving Rose Park out of this scenario at all, but we haven't talked about Rose Park. We talked about Head. So just for clarification, Rose Park feeder, the feeder pattern for Rose Park, does it change or does it not change? And I don't know which one of these lines.
The Rose Park feeder pattern into Martin Luther King would remain the same.
Thank you.
Rose Park would remain as it currently is, except for the fact that Rose Park's going to be moving back into their renovated school.
Perfect. That's what I just needed to clarify. Any other questions? Dr. Brandon?
Yes, how far away is Head Middle School from Martin Luther King Magnet? Do you know?
Only four or five blocks.
Like around the corner.
It's not, it's not far.
Not very far.
I don't have an exact distance measurement for you, but it's not far. And I didn't bring any larger maps to really show you the relationship, but they are relatively close.
Okay. So I'm wondering what kind of facilities they might have or space, outside space, or soccer fields or that kind of thing at Head?
They have, I think, I stand to be corrected on this, but I think they have a, a small half soccer field and one athletic field. So the athletic, outdoor, athletic space is very limited at Head also. And we've talked about that, and we really don't see a possibility for increasing use or allowing that use for Martin Luther King.
Okay. So can you just review for me what the parks' collaboration is going to look like, or how far along it is?
Well, we just started this discussion this week with them, and so they're looking at these drawings and evaluating them. But if you look at, at the last drawing, it would show that we would need to relocate the tennis courts from the southeast corner to the northwest corner. We'd need to relocate the baseball field due north by approximately 75 feet. We'd need to relocate the picnic shelter just to, a little bit to the north. And one of the playgrounds, the one that has a water feature to it, we'd need to relocate. All components that are at the park now remain. We just moved some of them around. We would not delete anything or change anything from the way it is.
I just want a clarification, because I'm the liaison person to the parks, so.
So, and, and as you know, Dr. Brandon, and I want to say this publicly, of course, we have not concluded a negotiation. However, we have a really good working relationship with Parks and Recreation. They, they are, they have built libraries and fire departments on school property, and, and we, we have a lot of joint use property now. And, and the conversations, the preliminary conversations so far has been positive. We just can't tell you for sure that we'll be able to work this deal out, but we think that it's very feasible.
Any other questions? Ms. Kim?
Yeah, just a clarification from Mr. Hudson and Mr. Hayes. So if I understand correctly, they're assuming that, we have reason to believe that we're going to have a capital budget, that it's up to us to parse that out. What you're bringing up is we control the criteria, we decide what we want to prioritize with its capacity, where and, the standard issue rubric, with potential tweaks, or not, to your point. But the bottom line is there's this pot of money, and it's just up to us to allocate.
You know, a discussion with the mayor's office, who has a lot of influence as well as the city council.
Good point. Okay, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure, yes, as opposed to just a one-off, like, MLK in its own pot of money? Like, that's what I wanted to clarify. It's just like all part of the capital.
There is no special money for MLK.
One other question?
Sure.
In scenario two, you mentioned one, one change from what we had heard, and that is in regard to the seventh grade. Can you explain that to me one more time?
Yes. So the change, the change to the seventh grade is that currently, there's three pathway years into Martin Luther King. There is, essentially, if you're a student in Head right now, you have four opportunities to pathway into Martin Luther King. What, and there's the three different grade levels. What we're proposing is to eliminate one of those. The net effect of that is essentially like a two-year commitment. A lot of children go to Head for only one year right now and immediately leave the next year. This is, in a sense, a two-year commitment, which will increase, will reduce some of the churn, and will only backfill Head one time. And so that will provide some additional stability into the seventh and eighth grades at Head.
So just to clarify that point, currently, a student, a sixth grade student at Head can pathway into MLK?
That is correct. Now, all of the pathway students have to meet the academic entrance requirements. Yes, you are correct.
That given, okay. And you're saying with this proposed change that they wait one year before?
No, the sixth graders will be able to continue to pathway in. So the sixth grade will be able to start Martin Luther King at seventh grade, which is the way they currently do. However, the seventh graders at Head will need to be, will, will be required to stay there until eighth grade, and then they'll be offered the pathway to leave from eighth to ninth.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you. For the, the students, I guess, the notion is to backfill seventh grade for the students that have departed. Have you talked about, or thought about the entry requirements for students coming in in the seventh grade at Head? So I'm thinking about school culture and the, who may show up. I guess they would have the same academic requirements as a fifth grader, but now they're in seventh grade.
So, so just to clarify, for Head, there is no academic entrance requirements to apply for enroll into Head, but there are academic entrance requirements to take advantage of the pathway.
And they would have to re, they would have to meet those requirements in the, in the ninth, I guess, between eighth and ninth grade?
In the eighth grade. And technically, though, they, they qualify on their seventh grade scores or their eighth grade scores, so yes, they would meet that in the eighth going into the ninth grade.
Do you have a sense how many students matriculate from eighth into ninth? How many kids qualify?
So, so are you speaking from the, from the seventh graders that leave that we'd be requiring to stay, or are you talking about the eighth? Which grade specifically are you asking about?
Eighth grade. So if you're, if you're now going four years at Head, you're, how many kids qualify to go from eighth into ninth grade?
Well, the, so the current, this past year, there were 36 students in Head's eighth grade that transferred on to Martin Luther King for ninth grade.
How many total students? How many total students were in eighth, and how many qualified?
Oh, there was about 100. We average about 100 students. I could look specifically at the enrollment, but the eighth, it was actually 87 last year. So 36 out of the 87.
Forty, 40 percent roughly, that's kind of the academic requirements to enter. And so if we open, if we have a, and I'm thinking about school culture, right? And you open up a bunch of slots with a way to get in, the people who may apply, how does that impact the seventh and eighth graders that stay? Have you thought about academic entry requirements to enter the pathway in seventh grade so that we get a high caliber student that comes in that'll be prepared to exit in eighth grade and go on to MLK? Has that been discussed at all? So if anybody can show up, right, in the, in the seventh grade to come in and backfill the space?
Well, it changes, it changes the nature of the lottery for the beginning of the pipeline. Now, there are no academic.
Now, there are no academic entrance requirements at either middle school. And we would propose keeping that, to backfill seventh grade at Head, eliminating, say, you backfill, you use the same lottery process to fill available seats at the seventh grade level at Head, and they would stay there for two years and then have the opportunity to qualify for Martin Luther King. That's different from MEGs. MEGs is an academic magnet, and we would not propose to change that process for Head, but to keep it the way it is now, which is backfilled with anyone who is available on the lottery.
So, from, from your experience, and maybe just, it's been a while since you've been in the classroom, right, as a teacher? I don't know how many years, but probably quite a long time. I'm just thinking about, from the teacher's standpoint and the class's standpoint, if now a class doubles in size with kids who haven't had the advantage of two years of rigorous academics, and it's open to anybody to apply, do we harm the kids who are, you know, maybe missed by a point to get in and wanted to get in? You know, what's that, what's that seventh and eighth grade look like? And is it really, will it really be a pathway? And what's the school culture look like if we backfill versus, you know, to some degree, I like the idea of, you know, the grade is smaller, and we can provide intense rigorous academics. And I'm disappointed it's only, you know, 45 percent that are eligible. I would think it would be higher, right? If you've got a small class and you've got the ability to really work with a smaller number of kids, that we'd have a higher percentage qualify.
So, just a couple of points to clarify. First, that is, currently, right now, that's the way it's happening. People leave in sixth grade and we backfill in, okay? So, this would, in effect, this would benefit Head, because it would actually provide at least some consistency where they wouldn't be leaving in that very next grade level. Okay? Secondly, the eighth grade are essentially, those students that are leaving, I don't know the specific facts of this, okay? But a fifth grader, if they made it on TCAPS when they turn six, they'll be offered the pathway to leave in seventh. If they don't make it, then they stay for seventh. They have the chance then to leave for eighth, and then now they did make it. So, for this sense, when you think about, that's higher than the district average of qualifications and the other students who are actually, that aren't qualified and haven't qualified for the past four years, because if they had, the most likely opportunity is they would have already left. So.
So, your answer is you don't think it's going to have a negative impact on school culture?
I think it will have a positive impact as compared to the current school culture.
Any other questions? Ms. Barrett?
Thank you. There, right now, there is a summer option where kids at the end of the summer can go into MLK. Will that, in option two, still be viable?
Yes, that is correct. That's referred to as the spring pathway or the summer pathway qualifiers, and that does remain in effect through all of these scenarios.
So, it's important to note what that means. If you didn't have that pathway, that spring pathway, then eighth graders would not qualify. The spring pathway means that your test scores at the end of eighth grade qualify you for admittance to Martin Luther King. If you eliminate that pathway, you've got to fall all the way back to seventh grade scores. And so, you don't want children who have come in with the expectation of getting into Martin Luther King to be eliminated their last year in middle school. So, I think that would be very dysfunctional.
Yes, good. And I have another question for you. I think we, the expectation is that once the board approves a recommendation, then if it is, in fact, this particular recommendation scenario two, then the assumption has to be that we are going to get the capital funding needed for the additions. Have we thought about Plan B? Plan B would include, perhaps the board doesn't approve of this particular plan, or, and/or, we don't get the funding that is needed from Metro Council. So, then we're right back to where we started from. I mean, it's, you just kind of never know what's going to happen.
Portables and lunch trucks.
Portables and lunch trucks. I'm sure parents would love that.
You know, I think, I think the reason why we're having this discussion now at this point in time, this school year, is to avoid crisis management. And our expectation would be that, our expectation is to fund the capital budget and be able to move forward with it.
Well, I think it's.
If not in January, then we, then we have to go back and look for a Plan B.
I think it makes a lot of sense. The scenario two is the one that you would more than likely recommend to this board.
I do recommend that, yes.
So, I think it's a very, it makes sense. The plan makes sense. I just want to make sure that we are covering all of our bases. So, any additional questions?
I was sort of wondering, while we keep talking about Council and their participation in this, have we, do we get any sort of feedback from Council or the mayor's office about supporting the plan?
Yes, we actually addressed this in the joint, in the Education Committee of the Council, and had very positive feedback from members of Metro Council who attended that, that committee meeting. I've also had conversations, as I mentioned, with Rich Riebling last week, and there are no guarantees, and please let me clarify for the media, there are no guarantees at this point in time, but Mr. Riebling expects us to have a capital budget this year. We're not looking at a, at a deferral as we had to face three years ago in the district. So, we will have a capital budget. The pressure will be on the Board of Education to adopt the correct priorities. And what I'm saying to you is I think that with a reasonable capital budget, and I'm talking about a budget in the 80 to 100 million dollar range this year, then, then we should be able to fit it into the priorities for this year.
Any additional questions? By the way, there's never any pressure on this Board of Education. We sail right through.
We will go through the other proposals. I am curious to see the handouts around diversity and what those changes make on residential grounds.
Yes. Chris, you want to present?
We do.
Scenario three, four, and five.
Yes, we do have the other scenarios, three, four, and five. Yeah, if you want to pass them out, they're separated out. While these are being passed out, I'll just remind you the sequence of what these scenarios are. Scenario three is this scenario that Dr. Register referred to when he said, when he said that we essentially could cap the capacity at Martin Luther King at 1,200. We could then lottery off pathway seats to the effect and just cap it off right at that. And there's several problems and concerns with that, but that is what scenario three references. Scenario four is the recommendations or the references where it's been suggested that Head should become an academic magnet school with academic feeder. So, this would convert MLK to serve grades nine through 12 only, but Head would then be an academic feeder school in, and there would only be one grade level of transition from eighth to ninth, and then Head would have academic entrance requirements. And then the third scenario is to increase the academic entrance requirements at all academic magnet schools, including Martin Luther King. What that would do is that would, in effect, limit the number of students qualifying through pathway seats, which would, which in essence would address the overcrowding as well. To go through these three scenarios, the scenario three, where we just cap it at 1,200 lottery off seats, there's, there's essentially neutral impacts on diversity there. There are several negatives in the sense of not honoring commitments to families and whatnot, but that scenario is there that's relatively neutral for diversity purposes. Scenarios four and five, both have a negative diversity impact. When you look at scenario four, by making Head an academic school with academic entrance requirements, it would be negative at the diversity at Head, and especially to the disproportionate impact African-American and minority students in Head. Essentially, if you look at that, the black population at Head would be projected to go from currently 366 to drop to about 150, while at the same point, the white population would increase from 150 up to 371. So, Head would essentially mirror closer to the diversity of MEGs, which would flip and have a disparate impact on the minority groups. So, not only is that a negative impact on diversity, but it's also a legal, legal vulnerability in the sense of how that gets implemented. And the same is true with scenario four or scenario five, in which we, if we were to choose to increase the academic entrance requirements. When we, when we prepared scenario five, we did so on the basis that the way in which the academic entrance requirements would be raised is that currently you have to score proficient or advanced in reading and mathematics on the TCAP score. The change in academic entrance requirements under this scenario five would be to require you to score advanced on at least one of those two categories while continuing to score proficient in the other category, because that's a relatively clear, easy manner to communicate to parents transparent. Now, so in that scenario, that would also have a negative impact on diversity.
In fact, that, that scenario, I think, would have a negative, negative impact on diversity at Martin Luther King and at Hume-Fogg. Is that correct?
Well, you're correct. We, in that scenario five, we actually added MEGs and Hume-Fogg into the diversity mix because.
Does that have a negative impact on diversity? Mean that it does not meet the definition for diverse? I'm not talking about more or less diverse, but we talked about our aspirational goals for diversity.
Yeah.
Not whether or not a school is more or less diverse.
That's right.
Just it is diverse.
That's right.
Would there still be diversity under our definition?
So, under the definition, the reason why Martin Luther King specifically is considered negative is because Martin Luther King currently meets the definition on the racial ethnic component of the diversity measurement. Under this scenario, the African-American black population would decrease below 30%, which would then not allow it to meet that, and that's why it would be considered a negative impact specifically at Martin Luther King.
So, it, you said it would. It could. Right. You're projecting 29%?
This is an estimate.
So, it could be one or two students off and still hit 30, the same way at 51% could be 50. You're estimating something that's five years from now.
That, you are correct about that. Now.
So, it could meet our definition.
One of the, yes. Now, one of the specifics of these data elements, these are estimates after looking at pathway and applying this change to pathway students and looking at application, the actual participation rate within applicant pool, and applying that to here. When the administration very first studied increasing academic entrance requirements, we looked at what are the current requirements and what would be the proposed change. We looked at third graders and seventh graders. And when we looked at that data, there's a very disproportionate impact to African-American families. While whites, while white families would also decrease, that decrease, I don't remember the exact amount, but say roughly 30 to 40%. African-American and Hispanic would decrease by more than 50% and maybe higher than even that. I don't remember the exact figures. And so, when you, when we looked at those specific figures, it was more than just diversity. It was also a legal vulnerability in the sense that we have an outstanding OCR complaint right now that's being investigated against Hume-Fogg for the academic entrance requirements based on national origin. And so, in that sense, there was also just the legal aspect of that.
Could the, from your student population who could apply, did you take into account that over the next five years, we would hit our academic targets, i.e. the pool, right? So, we let out goals as a board. I anticipate we're going to hit them. Did the pool of potential candidates increase in your analysis?
I'm going to say I don't believe it did. I believe it looked specifically at current.
Current levels. So, you didn't, you didn't think that we were going to hit our academic goals that we've outlined and grow the size of the pool of African-American candidates?
We used actual, we used actual data. So, we used the actual data based on actual requirements as far as if this change was implemented, and then we applied that to actual current participation rates, current pathway rates, and then applied that and projected that forward.
So, a different way to look at that issue is, is this. In another year, we're going to park assessment, a different, a different standard, if you will, and I think it would be extremely short-sighted to consider any change in academic standards now before we, before we implement Park and before we see the results and potentially want to make other changes to the standards at that time.
And I don't fully disagree with you. I'm trying to better understand the analysis that's been given to us, and I feel that if we don't say that the pool is going to grow potential candidates, right? I mean, I really do.
We would certainly hope so. That's what's happening to it now.
That we're going to, we're going to have a broader group of people. We're going to hit our academic achievement goals. We're going to have a broader pool of applicants that are available to apply, which, to me, says if we're trying to project five years out and we're saying we're going to be 1% off, well, it could be 5% higher. So, if in a year we want to consider raising the academic entrance requirements, we might be able to do that. And I would agree, it probably is short sighted to do it now, but it's something certainly to monitor. I'd be curious to see what this looks like if we were to show that we hit all of our goals over the next five years as outlined by Mr. Pinkston and all of the board, how big the pool is of candidates.
And as far as monitoring it goes, yes, and we have been, and that's why we actually did this analysis before we came with the changing of academic standards. That was evaluated prior to us ever even approaching you about the change at Martin Luther King, and it is something that we would plan to continue to keep monitoring, especially as we approach those developments.
I just, I feel we will, as we enter the capital budget process, have tremendous pressure for Gilwood, Hillsborough, MLK, Tuscaloosa. We have $1.1 billion of capital improvements that are backlog. And I agree with you, Dr. Register, that it may be short-sighted to raise academic entry requirements today, but it's something that we may want to.
Well, under, under no circumstances would I recommend that. Under no circumstances, raising academic standards, because we know, Chris said, he doesn't know for sure, but we know for sure that it would have a negative impact on diversity in the school system. We are in an OCR active complaint at this time. If we want OCR to be a major factor in our lives from now on, we change those standards and reduce diversity in these schools. That's just the bottom line.
And that's where I struggle is reducing diversity.
So, going back to my drawing, I like to be bigger picture, right? So, if we're saying that we've got all these other initiatives around standardizing and how we measure and how we teach, and that the ultimate goal is that the academic performance of all students begins to rise, then all of a sudden, you've got, you know, you used to have 100 students that qualified, now you've got 500 students that qualify. So, I mean, just with everything else that happens, right? If, if more people are meeting the minimum requirement, you tend to raise the minimum so that that level of, I use the term maybe, probably not, but that level of what it means to be at an MLK continues to be what it means, and that it's not 10,000 people that qualify, and that 10,000 people will get in. Because, you know, but we have to get to the point where all ships are rising before we can do that, and we're not there yet. We're not there yet.
But when we, actually, when we adjusted academic standards last time, when we changed standards, we really dealt with equivalency. So, we made, and I think Dr. Changus just came in and I, shoot me for calling his name, but, but we were very accurate in making a transition that was very equivalent in terms of the percentage of students who qualified for the academic magnets. And we would hope to be able to do that again, but it's, it's premature to do that at this point in time. And in view of, in view of OCR active complaint that we have about our selection process in academic magnets now, it would be foolish of us to try to adjust it at this time.
I have a question. What would the scenario be if you limited the number of students at each grade level at Head in each grade to a certain number? How would that work?
So, so one of the slight modifications that we've actually made within the scenario two that you have in front of you, and actually in scenario one and two that are both there, if you look at Head, both of those scenarios actually start. if you look at Head, both of those scenarios actually start to balance the enrollment at Head because right now, the fifth and sixth grades are significantly larger. There are about 200 students per cohort versus the seventh and eighth are about 100 students because so many people leave. One of the additional things is we're trying to balance that enrollment there. However, in the same effect, we need to fill Head to its capacity of about 600, but we are going to slightly reduce the fifth grade enrollment at Head to better balance across all four grade levels.
And could you not do it at every grade level or just, would it work in scenario two?
Well, if I understand your question correctly, are you asking, could we reduce all grade levels to the point where it would bring it below capacity at Head and just have Head underutilized?
Well, there are percentages of underutilization.
That's correct.
And so, because we look at 94% and then we see 63%. So if it were 94%, yes, I would say that might be helpful.
That could help, it needs to be done. Yeah, that's not, we did not factor that into the considerations. We did factor in slightly reducing the fifth grade to better balance all grades because right now, the programs are just different academic programs in fifth and sixth as compared to seventh and eighth. And what these scenarios are trying to do is improve and strengthen the seventh and eighth grade programs. And by doing so, we can increase the enrollment there and slightly decrease the fifth grade just slightly, but not to the point, we haven't written a scenario that in a sense really brings Head below its targeted enrollment or capacity.
So one of the things we did when we were talking, have had several conversations with the two principals, the principal at Head and the principal at Martin Luther King, was to look at appropriate size. And so the numbers that we're using allow an appropriate sized seventh and eighth grade at Martin Luther King and also to correct some inappropriate sizes at Head at the same time. So I really think overall, this proposal allows us to have good instruction at seventh and eighth grade at those schools.
Ms. Kim?
Mr. Miller, could you walk me through the current enrollment trends? I think I'm not following the logic of the flow. On the very first page of the one title proposals for Martin Luther King magnet.
Okay.
And so, for example, like at 11th grade, there's a continuous drive up and then it goes down towards the 17, 18, 18, 19 years. I'm just curious as to what the drivers are for those kinds of trends.
Well, the trends in the current enrollment trends, this essentially assumes we're only taking pathway students from this point forward, and it assumes a 95% attrition rate, which is what we found using history.
Got it.
So what you're essentially seeing is in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, there's incoming pathway students. After that, in 10th, 11th, and 12th, we essentially would be limiting the amount of backfill to minimal, and it would be about a 95% attrition at each grade level. And I'm not sure if that, if there's a specific question or if there's a trend that doesn't make sense in this as far as that, if you have a more specific question.
No, that's helpful, actually. The, I have a totally separate question, which is related to the long term and maybe to something that Mr. Hayes was noting, is just how this fits in. Well, because it seems like we may have a brewing problem, not to introduce more problems, but with Hume Fogg and John Early and, I mean, it just makes me think on out years, just planning generally. And yeah, I'm sure you all are well in the weeds of that, but this is all conjuring up other potential situations across the district for which it would be good to get ahead of them.
So what Mr. Jones just helped to inform me of is that Hume Fogg's ninth grade is currently filled about 67% with pathway students. Did I say that correctly?
So we still got a good amount of room for growth there. So we still have a good amount of room at this point at Hume Fogg for growth in the ninth grade?
Totally agree, but based on the trajectory from last year to this year, I suspect it's going to rock it up. But I don't, maybe-
The trend line there has not increased as strongly as the Head and Rose Park feeders into MLK have over the last three or four years.
So you think we're many years from-
Well, I think before we get there, we'll get to the park assessment, at which point everything's going to have to be looked at again.
The one, the one thing that makes MLK significantly different from Hume Fogg is the Head pathway, okay? There's three grade levels. There's four pathways coming into Martin Luther King. And at Head, every, at MEGs, you come in at fifth, for the most part, you come into MEGs in the fifth grade, you stay through the eighth grade, and then you have a one-time chance to go on. At MLK, at Head, there's three grades. And currently, as all of those students pathway, we then backfill those seats and then they leave immediately. So what's happening is it's escalated, the problem there has escalated further than the problem at MEGs because of those three pathways.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Looks like we have no further questions on the floor, so Dr. Register, I'll turn it back over to you for final comments.
We, you have a proposal before me, as I said, outset, it would be nice if we were not having to deal with this problem, but it's also a good problem to have because we're talking about a number of students who are successful. To put it in a proper frame for the remainder, for the entire district, our goal is to increase programs of academic rigor on all of our schools. And that's the, that's the foundation of where we're building. I've often heard, well, why can't all of our schools be like magnet schools? Is this what we're trying to do? And I think we're actually being successful with that when we look at the expansion of International Baccalaureate and Cambridge and the success that we're having in our other schools. So we are continuing to build on that, and I think now this recommendation will allow us to be ahead of crisis management. I think it would be a mistake not to take some action at this point in time. That's the one mistake I think that's most significant now is to just leave it alone and not deal with it. So with that, that concludes our report.
Okay, fantastic. And we will have, I have two final announcements that I neglected to make. One, Career Exploration Fair will be on October 30th from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Music City Center. This is where our beautiful, lovely, 5,000-plus freshman academy, pre-academy students will be embarking on the Music City Center for a day of fun, fascinating, fact-filled findings. Also, the recommendation from Dr. Register, from the director, will be on the agenda on the November 12th, at the November 12th board meeting. So if there are no other issues on the table, Ms. Frog?
I'm studying. Amen.
For a nice time.